So the first part of our presentation, we would like to give you an instructional update and then Stacy will give you a business office update. So just so you know, parents and students will have the chance to fill out a form to switch their learning model preference by October 30th. So if you are virtual and want to return to in-person, or if you're in-person and want to return to virtual, there's a form. It went out through Parent Square. Reminders will be going out as well. And if you do not see it through Parent Square, it's also on our website. So the technology update, I just wanted to provide you with a brief technology update. I know we've been talking about Chromebooks and waiting for Chromebooks. So they're starting to come in, which is good news. Middle school received 50 Chromebooks, beginning part of the month. And 60 Chromebooks were just delivered last week to be deployed to the high school. There's 86 more on order for the high school. And then 140 for both Harmony Hill and Abraham Lansing. We're not quite sure when those will come in. We heard the end of October, so we're hopeful. And these are funded through Title I and twice Title IV grant from last school year. So we will keep you posted. Also, we've seen 23 hotspots for our families through our McKinney-Vento grant. And we're waiting some Chromebooks through that grant as well. And then I wanted to tell you, after many years, we are revising our elementary report card. We have started with a committee of teachers, one per grade level. And they will be meeting. From the tearing, thank you so much. They'll be sharing drafts with other teachers. And for final, when we get closer to finalized version, we will ask some parents to also join us to look at the report card, to make sure it's easy to understand, it's readable. And we started with a survey that was sent out to elementary teachers this week. So, and that's Stacy.
Good evening. So the audit committee met on 10/13. We have three groups of auditors. We had Marvin and company. Heather Lewis presented on the annual financial statements. We had Michael Wolf, who presented on the annual risk assessment. And we had John Jomau, who is our internal claims auditor, who discussed the internal claims audit process. So some highlights for the financial statements from Marvin and company. Fund balance is 4.6%. It's just over $2 million. I wanted to talk about that for a minute. So that is an improvement over a prior year fund balance. We do have a planned operating loss in the current year of just under $117,000. And $2 million is short of one month's operating expense. So it sounds like a large sum of money, but on a $44 million budget, it would not cover, for example, September expenses, which were 4.5 million. So I just wanted to talk about that briefly. And then I also wanted to talk about reserves. So total reserves, which include our capital reserve, which we're undergoing current projects right now for our middle school roof, including on that, and our Harmony Hill boiler, and our debt service reserves. The total reserves are $4.5 million. That again includes the capital reserve and the debt service reserve. So reserves are to be used for special purposes. So I already talked about the capital reserves. We have $1 million that was voter approved, that we're spending the money right now on the high school, sorry, the middle school roof and the Harmony Hill boiler. Our debt service fund, we have $1.8 million in that reserve. We have more than $13 million outstanding in debt. We have workers' compensation reserves, $177,000. That does not cover one year's of expenses, not down there. Unemployment insurance reserve, $42,000. Again, that doesn't cover one quarter. Our last quarter was $80,000. Our ERS and our TRS reserves are planned to be exhausted in the current year. We talked about that during the budget development process. So that is a resource that goes away in the current year. We do have tax subsidiary reserves, $335,000. That is for all the cases that are pending that we know. So that's the purpose for that reserve. And then we have our EBLR, our Employee Benefit Reliability Reserve, which is $478,000. And we use that for our retirement incentives, to fund our retirement incentives. So our cash position has not changed. I do not expect us to come off of the OSC principal stress in the upcoming year. Despite the fact that fund balance has improved, our use of reserves is still, our reserves are grossly underfunded. So again, I just want to make sure that that's clear, that the cash position has not changed. As far as the operating, how we did in 1920. General fund revenues were under budget, 3.6%. And our general fund expenses were under budget, 3.7%, so close to a break-even situation. We did have some recommendations in the general fund. We had some year-end adjustments, made a couple of late invoices that we had to adjust for. Our school launch index of fund balance, which again, school launch funds have to be used for the purpose of food services. So we do know that we can discounter a plan for that. We weren't able to look forward on those plans because we closed early. We had no recommendations under federal, so that was good. We had unlinified opinion, which is the best possible opinion. So that was, that's recommendation. Okay, for Michael Wolf on the annual risk assessment. He has our rule recommendations, conduct a life parole, update our disaster recovery plan, schedule a physical inventory. Claims auditor should have training periodically, so stays up to date on changes, and then a couple of policy updates. And our claims auditor reviewed his procedures and accepted any questions. So from a timeline perspective, the audit reports are on tonight's agenda to be approved. The next part of the process in the fall is to have our fund balance and our reserve plans. And we'll talk about that at the November 18th meeting. We'll have that. And then 2021 budget timeline, our budget goals, and long-range plan I hope to have for December. I did talk to our financial advisor, Dr. Rikens, today, and he's hopeful that we'll have an update at some point in November. And also, Ms. O'Shea and I did register for a meeting, a conference on November 9th, with our financial advisor as well. It's a state-wide conference. Next slide, please. So financial state aid update. Let me know. Unfortunately, not a lot has changed since the last time we met. New York State is experiencing financial difficulties, we know this. Governor Cuomo has called for federal relief. Reductions to schools could be 20% across all age categories. If that is the case, and that's an inequitable method, the hardest hit schools would be the needy schools. And proposed hits all those categories. We are a city school district, we are a high-need school district, and we are a district that's been identified as being in fiscal stress. Right now, only some expense-driven aid categories have been reduced, which have had media impact on cash flow. So we've seen reductions in BOSI fees, access costs, pre-K grants, and our future ready grants. Those are the reductions we have seen thus far. So what we don't know, we don't know how much the total reductions will be. We don't know if it'll be 20% across all eight categories. And we don't know when those reductions will be needed. Our September aid payments were full, there wasn't a reduction. October to be determined. We don't know if these reductions will be permanent. So let me talk about expense-driven aids and how they work. So those reductions that were made over the summer, we had spent that money in 1819, and they were looking to be reimbursed for those expenses in 1920. And here we are in October 2020, and we still are expecting those funds. So is that going to be a permanent reduction, or will we be made whole? Will there be any federal relief for New York State? And if there is federal relief, will the money be distributed to schools? And if so, when? So there's some big questions. Next slide, please. So state aid reductions, if it's 20% across the board for full year to $4.8 million, impact to our revenue? We are planning a quarterly approach. We've been talking about this for our first level meetings now. We've been talking about the 10% plan. So that's a cumulative for quarter one and two, the 10% plan. That's what we're talking about tonight. What I'm going to refer to as the contingency plan would be the 15%. And that would be through quarter three. We're hoping that quarter four is never realized. So reductions impacts all levels, staffing, programs, our services, our facilities, our extracurriculars, and our financial wellness. So again, reductions impacted thus far, have been expense-driven aids, about $400,000 thus far. Next slide, please. Just an update on our progress on our committees. The budget committee did meet on 10/19. It is, it has the reports on where the draws as administrators, sensible to directors. Again, the goal is to provide recommendations for the 10% scenario. To date, we've identified a combined total of $2.02 million in reductions, with only a $25,000 change since the last time we met. And the difference is a resignation that is on tonight's agenda. Our next meeting is scheduled, will be scheduled actually, for the end of October. I just wanted to say that we are short of our ultimate goal of $2.4 million. We're short $375,000 for a 10% plan. Union leadership meeting update. So we met last as a team, all unit members, on 10/1. At that time, we did review the budget committee recommendations. We're continuing to work on revising the ETA incentive language, retirement incentive language. And we'll continue to have leadership meetings throughout the month, ongoing. Next slide, please. Just a reminder, the 10% state aid reduction is the $2.4 million cumulative goal. We hope through that plan, we will continue to be in-person in our high construction models. So there's changes there. The budget committee recommendations, I'll share later in this presentation. We've been discussing this at our super board meeting. Anticipated board action is at the 11/4 meeting. And then anticipated implementation is at the end of the first quarter, which is 11/16. The 15% state aid reduction, we would look at a virtual or an alternative instruction model at secondary level. The budget committee would be meeting throughout the remainder of the month, into November. We report out in November, and then the anticipated implementation would be January 4th. So the proposed reduction plan to 10% model has not changed, with the exception of the one resignation since the last time we met. But I will go through this. TRS, we had the step savings. We were under budget in that category. We implemented a district-wide study before school started. Only exclusion is health and safety. We had some savings in BOSI services, including records management, arts and education, and distance learning. We negotiated and terminated contracts. We negotiated our pre-K contract, terminated our ARC transition contract, and our reading improving contract. And we do have some staffing concessions for our individual contract holders for vacation buyback and mileage. Program reductions include the AM Academy, which impacts our high school, 2.3 FTEs. Clubs, the only two clubs that would be offered would be the National Honor Society and National Junior Honor Society. And we're exploring options for our athletic programs. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. To continue on, next slide, please, thank you. Staffing reductions, we have a 1.0 special education teacher. We have a 1.0 reading, which is through attrition. We have a 1.0 guidance, a 0.8 music teacher, 0.5 library media specialist, two teacher assistants, one 10-month secretary through retirement, one 12-month secretary through attrition, 0.4 registrar, one custodian through retirement, one cleaner through attrition, which is the change. Part-time security would no longer be offered on a regular basis at our elementary schools, and essential office retirement. Next slide, please. So the proposed reduction, total $2,025,000. If you take a look at the pie chart, 37.6% of the reductions are staffing. That's over $761,000. Extracurriculars, about 17%, which is about $346,000. The spending increase is $342,000. The contracts attribute to $271,000. TRS is $172,000. And BOSIs is just over $131,000. So recap, the 10% reduction proposal remains short of the cumulative goal, $375,000. Our next steps will be continuing to work with our union leadership and our budget committee to finalize our plan. Again, board action would be on November 4th for the identified reductions. And 15% proposal plan remains a work in progress to be presented next month. Other question?
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions from board members? I know not a lot necessarily has changed since we last spoke.
I mean, I have a few questions. Surprise. So question, the report card for the elementary, is that district-wide development? Everybody would have the same. And then a lot of type report card that we're looking to go to, to kind of say, maybe some postage, you know, at some point, what's?
So currently this year, we are using a Google report card. So it will be, everyone will input into Google. Beginning this year, with our existing report card. Paper copies will be made and sent home at this point in time. But we are looking for school tools for the future. In terms of this, it will be district-wide. It would be the same report card, catered by, we have teachers from all three buildings on the committee. And we're also, right now, we did not subscribe to the Parent Square feature that allows you to send things, secure materials through Parent Square. But we will be actually beginning second quarter to use for our secondary report cards. We did a cost analysis in between postage, et cetera. Parent Square will save things.
I did notice on our just saying, I noticed a donation for Chromebooks. And you had mentioned Chromebooks that were ordered in back orders. So you said there were some that were on order for the high school. Is that, those are not new orders? Those are orders that we placed previously, that we're still awaiting delivery?
Yeah, these are all orders that we ordered, that we placed previously. So out of the high school Chromebooks, about 148 should arrive. 60 of those did come, so there's still 80 outstanding. But they are starting to come in, which is a good sign.
I think they're ordered based from. So anything that were donations or made contributions to this point would be an additional purchase and a lengthy timeline for delivery of some things that were in the basis of the situation? Potentially, yeah. Questions on some of the financials? So some of the aid that you said spending with help will be, you know, at some of the grants. So you had mentioned pre-K and future ready classes as two grants that are having aid withheld. How is that affecting us? What do you know what the dollar amount is that is being withheld for those grants? I don't mean to put you on the spot, if you don't, it's totally fine. I'm just.
Yeah, this is from the summer. So it had been reported in September, the amount, the future ready was $12,000. And pre-K is over $100,000. I think it was $126,000.
So in conversation with the Office of Learning, that's anticipated at some time to come to us. The question is, when?
So it didn't affect the current budget cycle? And we're not expecting any withholdings for those grants this year?
So what we did this year is, as you know, we negotiated a contract with the Boys and Girls Club. And so we looked at it in terms of a potential 20% reduction. We did apply for the full funding, but we planned in advance. We may receive a 20% reduction. So the good news is our UPK grant was approved recently. We're not sure in terms of when the funds will come in, but we did budget accordingly this year.
Okay. Last question, expense-driven aid, you said was $400,000.
That's including the grants?
That includes the two grants.
Yeah.
And to be clear, we were able to reduce spending with both fees by $127,000 or $37,000. But we have over $400,000 in between 1819 and now, that we still have not received.
So the $400,000 is for all four of those categories. BOSI being access costs, pre-K, and the future ready. We were able to negotiate, renegotiate with BOSIs basically $131,000, lots of expenses for the current year. So, yeah, so that's good. But the $400,000 is all combined, so it's four categories.
Okay. And there's no expectation of, we don't know. We have no idea if there's going to be an additional one in that aid this year. You know, the thing is, it scares me to keep.
Spending money?
Yeah.
So that's why it's critical that we have an update in November. I did talk to Dr. Rikens today. I shared our plan with him. He was hopeful that we would have an update in November by the governor. Again, all those questions, we don't know. You know, his recommendation would to be to leave the expense-driven aids alone, obviously. So the way that it's been implemented is not ideal, by any stretch of the imagination. We don't know if they're going to be permanent. We hope that they're not permanent, but we don't know. There's just so many unanswered questions. So from a cash flow perspective, the $400,000 impacted us over the summer. So we need to plan. I did share with him that we were planning for the 10%, which he said was reasonable. So, and I shared that I'm calling for 15% our contingency plan. And again, we'll be attending a session on 11/9 with lots of other districts. But he was hopeful that the governor would have an update for us in November. And that's really, we really need that update. We really need clarity on what the reductions are going to be, so that we can be sure that we've done enough. And hopefully, we've done enough. But we need to know that, and we need to know it soon.
When will we normally know our October? We see four of our, except for the, we didn't get our summer. But our September payment, what would we expect?
We're expecting a minimal payment in October. It's less than $100,000. I don't know if it's going to be a full payment yet.
When?
Last year in September, we heard from the Governor of McDonald's, right? But I don't think we saw it. And it's just been until a week or so before the payment was made. And the payment was made on the last day of the month.
Last day?
Yeah. So maybe next week.
But considering it's a small payment, it's for every district, is that true? It's for every district?
Uh, districts are different. For us, it's.
It's small?
Yeah. I don't think it's $100,000. I think it's less than $100,000. But every dollar matters.
Right, right.
So now that you're playing out with Dr. Rikens about the long-range plans and where we're at right now, I mean, your gut feeling, like, is the risk reward worth? The expense-based aid where it is? I know, and I understand why we use it, but it seems like that's an unknown for us, where, you know, the things that we're doing and we can control, you know, we know that there are cost savings in the things that we can do. But continually putting money into an expense-based aid, where you're counting on someone else to give you back that money. You know, and we don't know that. And that seems to be an unknown, that seems to be a risk to me. And I don't know if, how you guys feel about that, if you think that's a risk as well.
So the danger is an expense-driven aid category. You spend the money, and then you're supposed to receive it in the following year. So it could, you could kind of shoot yourself in the foot if you understand in those categories, and they don't have them making permanent reductions. And it could have less in revenue the following year as a result. So again, it's based off of what you actually spend. So for example, what we spent this year in the 2021 school year, the expectation is we would receive the reimbursement in the following school year, the 21, 22 school year budget. So during the budget development process, if we're not spending the money, we could see less in revenue as a result. So hopefully, we know in November exactly what the state's plan is going to be, so that we can develop our budget, knowing all of the key information to have a legitimate budget.
So just from revenue perspective. The BOSI, we can add services to our commitment, but we can't take services away from our commitment. And the BOSI commitment is due by law before the budget is passed.
Yes. The timeline is flawed.
Totally flawed, yeah.
But is there anything to stop us from committing to nothing and then adding out carelessly after we set a budget?
So we can under-commit, and we have done that.
What's the downside?
The downside is we get less and less of on-call.
No, there's also services that our students are rolled in and during scheduling are planning to potentially sign up for. So that's one downside. It does allow us to say this is where our students are going to be and be so that. And then there's some other systems that we use that are continuous. So for example, substitute systems, et cetera, that we would need to then scramble to put some of them to sign back up. And I'm not sure.
But it doesn't, what's the commitment date? It was under the impression we have to.
April.
April, but it doesn't start until?
So I want, oh, we're on the hook, then we.
No, I understand, that's what I'm saying.
So we can explore the timelines and things like that in terms of. So we can, we can explore the, you know, the timelines and, um, and things like that in terms of...
So BUCs is the next, is the next expense driven aid. So whatever we spend it impacts the, the state the following year. Um, so we have that.
Some of the items on there, you probably collect, um, say, don't get the aid back?
Oh, absolutely. For lessons learned.
So exactly what you're saying. I mean, all of the information is going to be...
Absolutely. So we made, if you don't recall, maybe because during the budget committee, we had a nurse through BUCs. So, uh, we didn't have a lot of time, uh, last year, so we, uh, we got through BUCs. But during the budget process, uh, we hired someone and it was more possible, right? Yep. So certainly there's going to be that little, that would be true. Yes.
So throughout the entire budgeting process, we'll be looking across the board.
Oh, yeah.
Everything internally, externally, and, uh, it won't be just a low, a low, low, the budget will be looking, uh, great from the...
Can I ask a question about that? Um, so has there been any talk or consideration of maybe going to our legislators to see if, um, changes in, uh, so, uh, you know, if, if we were to be able to gain revenue by selling a property, for example, is there willing to be any kind of flexibility to allow us to transfer money into, um, expendable codes?
Operating, operating.
Thank you. I'm just curious if that's anything that's come up? If it's something that we might be able to, and, you know, listen, I'll advocate all day long. If it, if it means that, you know, we can save our programs and stay in business, um...
Something will definitely happen in the future.
And I'm not talking about closing our schools, but, you know...
I know that as far as the audit goes, this is only the second year we've been working with Marvin and company. And, um, with working with a, a, a new group, there's a, a lot of, you know, new things that they made, recommendations that they made compared to who we worked with previously. And we were able to move forward on a lot of those recommendations this year. So thank you, Stacy, and, uh, to everyone involved that helped, uh, make us make progress, um, in comparison to the last year. A lot of, a lot of really great progress, uh, from being on the audit committee and getting the report back this year. There's a lot of positive feedback.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the team works really hard. Thank you. I appreciate that.
As far as, um, comments from the, the public, I know that one was from Marian Gendron, which was specifically about the sports and what our, our plan was there. And, uh, the question was, like, how can districts like Schenectady and Albany, you know, continue to afford sports when we can't? When it's perceived maybe in the public that they're in more dire straits than we are? Um, and I know, uh, you know, districts very wild, but, and we're all kind of unique. So there's that part of it, but I don't know if you want to speak a little bit, uh, to that question?
So we're a, a small city school district and so, uh, I'll have Stacy address the budget, uh, question. But it is, it is different and we have a smaller budget to be given. Um, and then I'll talk about some of the things we're doing with that.
So, um, of the two million dollars that we've identified, seventeen percent of that is, um, extracurriculars, some clubs and athletics. Um, I know that, um, the dollar amount attributed to that, let me see, sorry, it's three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Um, seventeen percent of the two million dollars. So, um, we took a look at absolutely everything. The line item budget over and over and over again, and struck every line and tried not to, uh, impact the extracurriculars, right? Um, but unfortunately it was unavoidable. We have a forty-four million dollar budget, uh, the majority of our expenses, our salaries and benefits. Uh, there's not a lot of plus, uh, and I remember really, there's no plus in our budget. Um, so you can't really compare a Schenectady budget, which I think it's, it's definitely over a hundred million dollars, um, and Albany the same. So it's not really an apples to apples comparison. But, um, we're making some, uh, progress, uh, in the areas of, of sports. So I'll have to, she'll talk about that. We've been working for about thirteen years.
Yep. So we're, we're having discussions in terms of coaches. We're looking at transportation, um, working with an insurance company. Is that something that we can have, uh, parents, uh, transport students to events? We're going to be, uh, reaching out to our, our booster clubs to, to discuss some potential fun, fundraising. Um, our booster clubs, many of them are final one to three. So there's, there's discussions in all of, in all of the areas. I'm moving, um, that with the tribunal, we're meeting with him again, uh, tomorrow. So we're continuing, um, to, to explore various options in athletics.
So with the athletic programs, um, our council decided to, uh, push the fall sports, uh, to, to March. And there is discussion, potentially the winter sports could be pushed to January, uh, which would, uh, give us a little bit more time, um, as we finalize our plans and hopefully have some more solid information on what exactly the reductions are going to be.
Right. If it comes back at, you know, eight percent instead of ten percent, then we will...
Then we'll look at all the reductions. We'll meet as the budget committee and we'll talk about what we're going to bring back. Yeah.
Even if, even if it's a lottery, if the schools that we compete with are that, are that history.
Right.
So it's, yeah, we might be able to, but if the schools in our league are, are going to be, said...
So, yeah, so we're looking at all the levels of sport, high risk, medium risk, low risk. We're looking at what other, um, what other districts would be doing in those areas. And you're right, some, some sports, um, other, there might be very limited participation. Way of safety options and we're having discussions around, around budgetary kind of... We do know though, if, if, uh, January started, we understand that there's also, um, you know, uh, preconditioning and, and other activities. So we're having discussions around all of those.
As far as, uh, questions or comments on the agenda, I just wanted to call out, uh, Retirement, Kevin Langlet. Uh, I'm thanking for his time with the district and, uh, just, uh, thank you very much for all the effort, uh, you put in for the district and the community here. And I also wanted to acknowledge the two donations that were provided to the district. One from the Hudson River Community Credit Union and another from Hannaford, um, both going towards, um, the district in, in different ways. And thank you to those organizations for, especially in this, this kind of difficult time that we're in. The, the donations help a, a lot with various programs that we do. So thank you. Were there any other comments from board members on anything on the agenda? With that, could I get a, a motion for the board to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
On my end.
Mr. Diller? Yes, Mr. Pentzow?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen? Carrie? Yes. Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes. As far as, uh, comments from the board on any topic at all, anything unrelated to the agenda?
I'm just wondering if we can have a conversation, uh, about our current meeting setup and, and how we're doing this right now and essentially maybe thinking some things. Um, I've heard some feedback and I, I think it's very difficult for people at home, um, especially in this situation with the math. You know, I, I'm not going to say the math, but I'm just saying they can't tell who's talking or, or who's speaking because we're all behind each other. We're in a row. Um, you know, it looks like I'm talking to Ted back, she's talking, you know, behind me. It, it's really difficult. I'm, I'm wondering if anybody would be willing to have a conversation about how, how we are holding these meetings and, and potentially, um, you know, are there different options to be able to open it up possibly to, to, um, you know, some public here? If we were to be able to manage something like that.
So we can definitely have those conversations and it's hard too, right? Because I'd like to look at you, but then, but then, uh, it's hard for people to hear and what we're facing forward. So it definitely was some opposition, some ideas. Yeah.
I was just going to, I think we need to consider the space for the indoor air hall with winter curtains. And, I mean, we're here, now already windows open, I don't think. I don't feel any air. It's kind of stuffy in here. And I, the auditorium, I mean, I know there are doors there, but I'm just saying, it's something we need to consider where that space is.
So we can work with Jim Stapleton, our facilities director, on the, uh, indoor air conditioning, uh, in our buildings. So that's definitely something we'll, I think that is...
If, if, uh, if it comes to the, the, on the floor, we, we finally get some information from the state, uh, our, our, the people, we, we want to hint that, that, that the, uh, possibly we could, the high school gym, uh, the space, uh, the, the area is pretty large. We could space people out. We, we, we had to limit the number and we could spread ourselves out. And, um, I know, uh, it adds, it adds a lot, we allow Chromebooks, but, uh, I think if, if in fact, you know, when we're following the, the answers, if the door, we, we probably want to send that meeting. And you, you, I, you know, for, you could accommodate them on the, but I still, just do that, you know, if that's the thought.
And I know that there's a, a lot to, to think about too, because, you know, it could potentially involve, you know, overtime or other things. Cause that, we have to figure out cleaning, additional cleaning, which is a whole consideration.
A lot of moving parts.
Yeah, a lot of moving parts. But I think it's definitely something that we should, um, investigate further and see if there's, there's some way we can do safely and, and properly in a, a way that, um, you know, people can better engage with.
Is the, is the maximum fifty? I mean, wouldn't that be the maximum we could have? And that includes us. So we have to consider that too.
That's currently...
Yeah, the current, right.
So we would have to figure out or identify some sort of system for...
How people...
How that would work.
Yes.
And how would they work streaming at the same...
Right.
Time?
Right.
So then others...
But if, um, yeah, we, we can continue that, that conversation and, uh, start a conversation with Jim Stapleton about it. And, uh, thinking about what the costs would be, if there would be any, if there's ways we could manage it without additional costs. So I think that that would be a good first step. Any other comments or discussions people would like to bring up? I know that one from the community was from Stacy Smith, which was just that, uh, inside our little gifts, there should also be a, a packet that's taped there. So don't throw it out without looking at that. Aside from that, I just wanted to, uh, thank everyone that was involved in the, um, video and every, uh, kind of nice reception we got earlier. It's, uh, a particularly difficult year to, to be on the board. And, uh, I'm very appreciative of the time that people put into that. So thank you.
Uh, sorry, I just said practice. Um, Stacy, I'm Harry, and then her last name is now Bold.
Oh, here, I'm trying to make sure that we don't, uh, we don't miss identity by that. Thank you. I'm looking at the top part of the email. Uh, with that, uh, as far as, cause there's nothing else from people, uh, on the board or, or any additional emails that, uh, I don't appear to be coming in from the community. Our, our next set of meetings is on November fourth. And, uh, November eighteenth, they'll be at six o'clock. They'll be live streamed. We'll also figure out, we'll, uh, continue these discussions about if there's a possibility for some folks to attend in person as well. And we'll post any updates as soon as we have them available on that. As far as, uh, next topics, I could use a, a motion from the board to enter into executive session at six fifty-seven to, uh, discuss the, um, you know, uh, retirement incentive for the Teachers Association.
Thank you, Mr. Diller. Okay. Mr. Diller? Yes. Mr. Pentzow?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Yes. And, uh, Carrie? Yes. Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes. Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you.